Call the April 18th Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. And we'll have invocation, right before the invocation though, I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of Representative David Brumbaugh who passed away last Saturday. Thank you. Rich?
If we can bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father God, we invite your presence here tonight. We thank you for the new appointment of Deborah Wimpy as a member of this council. May your wisdom and guidance be upon our city council as they guide Broken Arrow through a time of growth and prosperity. We look to you to help us through any adversity, any challenges along the way. May your spirit of unity be upon this council as they lead our city. Please watch over all our first responders and their families. Please help all those in leadership make the right decisions. Thank you for the growth we see in Broken Arrow. May this city be known as a city of peace and safety. In the name of your son, amen.
Please stand and join Councilman Lester in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do the roll call.
Oh, roll call. Let's do roll call first. Let's get right to the pledge. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Now we'll do the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll start Judge Sagely will swear at different end. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I declare.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
That I will not knowingly receive.
That I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a city council member.
The duties of a city council member.
For the city of Broken Arrow.
The city of Broken Arrow.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next item six on the agenda is election of the mayor. Any motions?
I make a motion to elect Craig Thurman for mayor.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Obstain. And election of vice mayor.
I make a motion that we elect Scott Udi as vice mayor.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Obstain.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
The next item is consent agenda. We have a few items to be removed from consent agenda. We have item seven G, item seven H, and item seven I, along with item seven S. So I'd entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding items G, H, I, and S.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item, uh...
Seven G?
Uh, seven S. I guess Scott had a conflict with that, so.
Okay. Seven S?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve, uh, item seven S.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi? Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
And, and these next three items, uh, the reason that I suggested that we pull these from consent is because the motion on there it said accept the resolution as opposed to approve the resolution. So if you would take those items separately, um, and the motion should be to approve the requisite resolution and authorize its execution.
Okay. In seven G, I make a motion to approve resolution number 10-10 and authorize its execution.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
And item seven, uh...
H.
H. I make a motion that we approve resolution number 10-11 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
And in seven I, I make a motion we approve resolution number 10-13 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Remove to item nine. Public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Nine A, discussion and consideration of possible approval of authorization for the mayor to execute proclamation declaring the week of April 23rd through 29th as Volunteer in Police Service Week in the city of Broken Arrow. Recognition of the volunteers in police service. Brandon Berryhill.
I wish to say thank you to the volunteers. Thank you to the volunteers. Uh, there's a lot of things we would not be able to do without their service. Obviously, we're reserve officers, but behind the scenes, I don't think people realize. Uh, they're all over the police department and community events. Uh, we have numerous of them here tonight. We also have a check that represents the monetary value of all the labor that they have given the city as donations. I'd like to invite Lisa Ford and her cadre to come on down. Mayor, you wanna...
Well, and thank you so much. The, the hours they put in, this, it does so much for the city. And, and this is a check representing that amount of the hours that they put in.
Wow.
It's five hundred twelve thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Saving citizens and... Okay, item nine B.
Um, we actually need you to take a motion on it to declare...
Oh, we do a motion on that.
Proclamation, sorry. Yes.
Uh, do we have a motion for that proclamation?
I approve the proclamation declaring the week...
Make a motion to approve the proclamation declaring the week of April 23rd through the 29th as Volunteers in Police Service Week.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
It is amazing what they do for our city and the amount of time they spend. Item nine B, presentation by Alex Mills, Director of Engineering and Construction.
Good evening, mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and give a, a brief overview of our department and some of the projects we're working on and, and the structure of our group. Overall, um, our group is responsible for the engineering and construction administration for all municipal projects in the city of Broken Arrow. Currently, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty-plus projects under planning, design, or construction. Uh, we're organized into four divisions with twenty-two employees. Uh, we have a construction division, an engineering division, a planning division, and a stormwater division. This is our general organizational chart. Uh, we have four very highly qualified division managers and a talented group of staff. To do all the projects we do with that number of people is, is quite frankly amazing, and I'm very honored to be, uh, the leader of that group. Our construction division oversees the construction administration of all public improvements. Uh, we operate a bridge inspection program yearly. Uh, we inspect our retaining walls yearly, and we do a dam safety, uh, program as well. The engineering division, um, is highly active. We manage all architectural and engineering projects. Uh, those can be, uh, contracts we do with architectural and engineering firms. We perform a tremendous amount of projects in-house. Uh, a lot of municipalities do mill and overlay projects. They send those to consultants. We do those in-house with our in-house engineers and technicians, and that actually saves the city quite a bit of money. That group handles the bidding of all construction contracts, including the advertisement, bid opening, and tabulation, and then a recommendation for bid. We contract and manage all other professional services, such as serving, surveying, uh, geotechnical and environmental services. Our planning division, uh, handles, uh, the formulation of our capital improvement plan, which we're, uh, very active on right now. Uh, they prepare, uh, grant and loan applications. As, um, I think we noted last council meeting, we received an STP, uh, grant from, um, federal government. Uh, the community development block grant, which we're going to discuss later in this meeting. Uh, various other grants and programs. Uh, that group also, uh, oversees our right-of-way acquisition process and our GIS system and works on with the ADA transition plan and also with the safe schools program, uh, with Broken Arrow Public Schools. Our stormwater division, uh, performs a lot of in-house designs. Uh, they review all public stormwater projects. Uh, our flood plain administrators is the head of that department or division. We handle, uh, stormwater quality administration, code enforcement, and we, uh, inspect our detention ponds on a yearly basis. Transportation projects, we currently have forty-one projects, uh, either in planning, uh, design, or construction. Those include rehabilitation or widening of roads, new construction of roadways. We have a Thirty-seventh Street that's, uh, out and has, uh, received a bid on. Uh, intersection signal designs, bridge designs, railroad crossings, streetscape like we're doing, uh, for downtown, and then various, uh, studies and reports, um, court, uh, corridor design, signal synchronization, so forth. Some of the example projects we have going on is the Ninth Street widening, uh, which is, uh, getting ready to have utility relocation start. Thirty-seventh Street construction, which we're going to award, uh, probably mid-May. Uh, the Kenosha surfacing, uh, which is also going to start mid-May. That contract's been awarded. And then the downtown streetscapes project, which we're hoping to, uh, finish up, uh, first of June. This is a map of, of the vast majority of those projects. Some of our projects are not mappable, and obviously you can't see this very well, but it gives you an idea that those projects are distributed across the city pretty evenly. Uh, water projects, those include water tanks, uh, both new and rehabilitation of, of existing tanks, distribution lines, uh, various connections, and improvements at our waste, our water treatment plant. Uh, we have a long-term water supply plan, uh, that's active. Uh, we're, uh, designing a twenty-four-inch water line, uh, to tie our two systems together, and, uh, we're, uh, about ready to start, uh, design on a elevated storage tank. Waste water projects, we have about twenty of those going on. Uh, those include wastewater treatment plant improvements, both our own plant and at RMUA, Hakey Creek, which is our, our joint, uh, system with the city of Tulsa. Uh, trunk lines, lift stations, and force mains. Uh, we have the Aspen Creek Relief Line that's, um, probably three-quarters away, uh, complete construction. Uh, the Onitere Road Lift Station, um, is, is operational and about ready for final turnover. Uh, the Two Hundred and Ninth Street Lift Station in Force Main, which is a critical project for the new, uh, Temple Ridge Public School, uh, is under construction, and we hope to be done, uh, in advance of the school opening. And then we're also working on a long-term wastewater system master plan. And again, there's a map of the projects. Stormwater projects, uh, we have ten on, underway. Those includes drainage improvements, uh, for small areas, neighborhoods that might be having problems. Uh, includes large regional detention facilities, dam projects, and master drainage plans. Uh, we have the Broken Arrow Creek Master Drainage Plan underway right now, about to finalize. Uh, Stone Ridge and Elm Drainage Improvement, it was just near the hospital. Uh, as soon as we, uh, confirm that we can, uh, work on the property through condemnation, we'll be starting that project. Uh, the Thirty-seventh, uh, Street Regional Detention Facility, which is next to the Thirty-seventh Street roadway, uh, we'll follow up that roadway project, and we're going to make some drainage improvements on Albany Street in front of the high school. Parks projects, uh, twenty-four projects, um, really active in parks right now. Um, uh, playgrounds, restroom facilities, athletic facilities, uh, trails, golf course improvements at, uh, Battle Creek. Uh, we have the Events Park Adult Softball Complex that's, uh, the design is, uh, getting started. Uh, Community Trail Network that we're working on. Um, synthetic football fields at Neen House, um, uh, two of them are under construction. Uh, the Roast, uh, West Dog Park should go to bid here soon. Uh, and the interactive water feature, which has been a very, uh, interesting project. You can see the picture of it all lit up over there. It's quite, quite the sight at night. Uh, public safety and special projects, we do projects for the police department and the fire department, of course, and other, uh, catch-all municipal-type projects. Uh, we have a fire station number seven is under design and nearing completion of design. Uh, we're also about ready to bid the, uh, Police Downrange Building, which is out by their firing range. Uh, the Liberty Park, uh, Trail Retaining Wall Repairs, that's the picture in the bottom right, and that will reopen Friday. It's, it's complete. That picture's about a week old. Uh, the Stony Creek Conference Center Infrastructure Improvements and, uh, the Center for Arts, Innovation, and Creativity, uh, that, that has just started design as well. Oh, and there's a picture of those projects. So, I went through that kinda quick, but, uh, if I can answer any questions about any projects we have, I'd be happy to.
Any questions?
I have two, mayor.
Okay.
Uh, two questions, yeah. Like, first off, tonight there was a contract that was awarded for Aspen. I'm sorry, for, uh, Kenosha from Aspen to Garnet. Would you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, the, uh, are you talking about the mill and overlay project? Yes. Uh, Magnum Construction got that project, and we should be, uh, have boots on the ground, uh, the first or second week of May.
What, what does that project consist of?
Uh, we're gonna mill and overlay that road from Aspen all the way to, uh, near Garnet. It transitions from asphalt to concrete, and we'll tie in at that location.
How long will it, it take for that work?
I think our, our contract time's two hundred and seventy days, but we hope to beat that. Oh, excuse me, ninety days. We, we hope to beat, uh, school starting, uh, in August.
And finally is, I, I spoke to Kenny before the meeting, and I would like to speak to you, is that sometime next month, I would like for you to give the council an update on the, where the plans are to do the modernization of the Lynn Lane Water, uh, wastewater treatment plant.
Absolutely.
I think, I think we're at the point now where we can update the council, and then we could turn around and update the, the city on the fact that we're very close to completing those plans and specifications, again, that project started.
Wonderful. We had a, actually, a design review meeting ninety percent today, so I'd be happy to give you a more detailed update next council.
Absolutely.
How'd the numbers come in on the Aspen, or on the Kenosha project?
Uh, very good. We're getting excellent pricing. Um, I think it was eight hundred and fifty thousand. We had budgeted a little over a million. Um, our Thirty-seventh Street project came in, uh, very well, uh, below engineer's estimate. So now's the time to be building stuff. I guess the contractors are pretty hungry, and we're getting some great pricing, so.
If, if you had to, to put a number on the hundred and twenty projects, how much, what's, what's the value of those projects that currently for, that we're working on in our city, just to...
Uh, somewhere near a hundred million dollars, probably. Is that a fair...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then next item is a presentation by Jeanette McCormick, and, uh, we've got a, uh, need a motion to table that into the, uh, May second meeting.
Still move.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, uh, citizens' opportunity to address the council. No one has signed up. Um, item eleven, general council business. Consideration, discussion, possible approval of the relocation of Vietnam War Memorial in Central Park to, to Veterans Park. And this is Scott Esmond. This is something that, uh, been working on for a while, and a lot of people are excited about that.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Scott Esmond, Parks and Recreation Director. If you could bring up the site plan, the first file. Uh, this shows the location. Needs to be turned, if you can. Okay, we'll look at it sideways. Uh, you can go up a, a little bit.
There you go.
That's the community center, the big white, uh, rooftop there, and the current location of the Vietnam War Memorial is located there. Um, it's been there, uh, I know, for over about twenty years, if not longer. We're proposing, if you look in the top right, that, uh, yellow circle, that's Veterans Park, uh, making it part of, uh, the veterans' area. If you could go to the pictures. It'll be the, yeah. That's the current monument in Central Park. Uh, I think most people are familiar with it. You can keep going to, to more pictures. Just keep sliding down. This is actually, shows the, uh, the service people that were lost during the Vietnam War. These are the insignias, uh, of, uh, two of the, the Marines, one of the Navy, and keep going down. It's on granite laminate and the Army and the Air Force. I took this picture just to show you how the laminate is put up on the, the wall. It's just, uh, about a half-inch piece. And this picture's just showing it was erected by, uh, the Roundup Club. And this shows you some of the contributing plaques that would be relocated, uh, if it's approved. And the next thing is, we had a master plan done, uh, by R.L. Shears. Um, we have started the implementation of that. Right now, we have the fountain in the center that's in place. Uh, on the left-hand side is the Women's War Memorial and the stage area. If you can come down just a little bit. There, uh, the circle, that's where the Childers, uh, statue is located. If you could go, I guess, up. And that's the Hank Meisner or the American Patriot statue in the, uh, upper round area. Where this, uh, proposed, uh, Vietnam memorial be relocated, um, I guess I can go over here. Would be, uh, coming off this, this, uh, plaza area is not constructed yet, but we would do a walkway from Main Street and put in this plaza area, and that's where the relocation, uh, of, of the granite piece would go, the insignias and all the, uh, contributing plaques, and then it would lead on up to the, uh, American Patriot statue. We would also go ahead and do this walkways over to the fountain. Uh, that's what this proposal is recommending. And if you could go to the next file, please. Uh, this basically is a rendering of, of how R.L. Shear seen this was gonna look. Again, we'd have three walkways coming into the plaza area, uh, where the monument would be located, and again, be just a great fit in Veterans Park. And the next slide, please. And this is the cost estimate. Currently, it's a, we're, we're costing it at about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, currently, it's not funded, but if the council approves this tonight, we would look at putting it into the FY eighteen capital budget. Uh, again, I just think it'd be a great addition, um, and, uh, that's really the presentation. Be happy to answer questions.
Any questions of Scott?
I, I have a, a, a couple of comments, and, uh, Scott, you did an excellent job of the presentation. I was so pleased to get this on the agenda, then look and see what kind of presentation, what you've done with that so far, and, uh, and the city manager, I really appreciate it. It started with me a couple of years ago when I was at a, a, um, veterans' activity there in, in Veterans Park. And at the end of it, at least each time I would go, they would say that if you wanted to honor the Vietnam, uh, veterans or Vietnam War people, the people that we lost there in Vietnam, it's across the street. And I stayed each time to see how many people would actually cross the street. There were a few. I didn't think it was quite fair. I came from that area, and, uh, I, I can tell you the name of these, uh, people. Sammy Jones, Walter Black, James Pendergrass, uh, Buddy Gaynor, uh, Paul Lucas, Gary Barnett, Kenneth Rankin. They all died. Uh, most of them were friends of mine and, uh, of Councilman Lester, as I know also. Uh, they gave their life. Uh, their country called them, and they gave their life. Uh, the Vietnam War might not have been, uh, the favorite war of a lot of people, but when the, the commander-in-chief said, "You need to go," they went and they died. So I want to make sure they're honored. I want to make sure that, um, high school students, middle school students, elementary students, when they go to Veterans Park, they see that, what it takes. You know, uh, with, uh, council and, uh, vice mayor now, Udi, uh, we take care of the youth city council, and one of the requirements that we take them to Washington, D.C., and we were just there this last month, is I have to get up early in the morning, and they have to tour Arlington Cemetery. I think it's one of the, my favorite monuments in, in Washington. I worked there. I, I buried around three hundred and fifty, fifty people there during the Vietnam War. So I just want to make sure that, that, uh, these gentlemen, the representation of the Vietnam is put in our Veterans Park, and I appreciate your effort on that. And I certainly hope the council is in agreement with it.
And I would echo those. Three of those were classmates of mine, and, and just a little history, the reason the Roundup Club sponsored that is Buddy Gaynor was a, a clown for the rodeo. Bob Gaynor was very active in the rodeo, and his dad was instrumental in getting this memorial established many, many years ago, so. And Sammy Roberts, who was the first Broken Arrow to die in Vietnam, was a classmate of, of Johnny, so. Uh, and I as well knew all those, so I would encourage the council to also...
Right. I just think it's, uh, very important that, uh, our young people realize that lives were given, you know, for their country at this point, so.
I would hate to remind council, uh, Councilman Parks and Councilman Lester that they're old enough to be my father, but the, the, uh, what I would...
Did you notice he said that after we voted?
Yeah, really. Timing is everything. Um, but I, I point that out because my, my father-in-law was a, a Vietnam, uh, war veteran, uh, stationed, uh, in, in the, in theater. Um, and, uh, I, I think it's important that we, uh, make sure we have a place to honor those who gave their last, much in the words of, of Councilman Parks. And I, I say this because I have a, when I was involved with Rooster Days, it's, it's over there, and the Rooster Days takes place over there, and people weren't sure what to do with it. They tried to treat it with the dignity it demands and, and expects. Then you've got walking around with corn dogs around it and, and, and everything, and I think that, um, we, we owe a duty to those who died here, uh, who died there and are honored here, but also to those who fought and came home and weren't always treated well when they did. Um, we, uh, we owe them an obligation to make sure that, uh, their monument and their honor is not lost to me in the midst of corn dogs and funnel cakes, but is, is, uh, maintained in the, in the proper spectrum that it should be.
And I agree.[1766.08] And I agree, I think Scott's right, we do need to honor, and all the councilors are right, as far as what we need to do, this is a good way to show the respect to those people that gave their life, and I do appreciate, I see Ralph Pointer in the office, in the audience, along with several of the Vietnam veterans and other veterans, I know they support this, that's something that they've also wanted to see happen over the years, and so really excited that we're finally able to do this, and I appreciate everyone's work on it.
What's the timeframe? Once approved, what's the timeframe?
We would first need to go through the budgeting process, and, you know, if it's approved, we would go in then with R.L. Shears and some design, so, you know, it could be maybe by late winter or spring, something could be done by that time.
I will let the council know, members, I haven't included in my budget proposal request any capital improvements, and so you will see that next month.
Well, I'd make a motion then that we approve the relocation of the Vietnam War Memorial to Veterans Park.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Item eleven B, ratification of the Mayor's Signature on Community Development Block Grant, Tulsa Urban County. Alex?
Alex Mills, Director of Engineering. Every year, we're, and awarded an allotment of federal funds called the Community Development Block Grant. Our allocation for 2017 is three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-fifteen. We are obligated to use that money in what is called the CDBG area, which is a designated area, lower to middle-income homes. We have determined that the best bang for our buck with this, the funds this year would be to do a combination of two projects. One would be a twelve-inch water line down the east side of First Street, connecting to a twenty-four-inch water line on Greeley, coming down and connecting to a six-inch on Detroit, and then also the rehabilitation of the Fourth Street Collector Street between Detroit and Midway, which is four blocks. The papers handed out to you and the files do show that we have a distribution of funds. We plan to use the federal funds for materials on the water line, which is about eighty-thousand dollars, and then use our own in-house forces and equipment to make up the difference of sixty-one, sixty-one thousand dollars for a total of a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars on that project. The Fourth Street project, we would use the remaining CDBG funds of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, and then use our in-house forces to do the milling and overlaying of the pavement, which would make up the remaining hundred thousand dollars. The mayor was kind enough to sign that for us, and we're requesting the council's ratification of his signature tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Alex?
Make a motion, we ratify the Mayor's Signature on Resolution Ten Twelve, an application for fiscal year 2017 Tulsa Urban County Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
I got one coming.
Yes.
Alex, do me a favor, Councilmember Wimpy has some questions about CDBG. Whenever you do orientation, make sure you remember to talk to her about it.
Yes, sir.
Which is the only, only unencumbered federal funds that we get, that we have by right, which may be going away this year, may be the last year that we see them, but they've really done a lot for our community.
I gave her the map, but it doesn't do justice on exactly knowing where those funds are eligible.
It's a good ride, man.
Item twelve, preview ordinances, consideration discussion, possible preview ordinance repealing Chapter Seven of Broken Arrow Code, Article Six, massage establishments. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir, the legislature passed the Massage Therapy Practice Act, and in so doing, basically eliminated the city of Broken Arrow's ability to regulate this outside of certain circumstances like zoning, for example. We can regulate the establishment of various buildings, but because, as you know, the city of Broken Arrow doesn't have a charter, we can't argue home rule, and so we are specifically exempt from that. This particular ordinance, what it does is it repeals the regulations that were originally enacted, and it has amended from time to time with regard to massage practitioners and other businesses. So, we recommend that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption at the next meeting.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We don't have any ordinances, we have remarks and inquiries by governing body members. I would like to welcome Deborah to our council, and I appreciate your enthusiasm and passion for the city. I think you'll see all the counselors have that. Also, I want to, even though Richard Carter's not here, I want to commend him for his twenty-four years of service to the city and his humble service that he gave the city, and appreciate what he's done too, so. If anyone else has any remarks or inquiries?
If you didn't see the news tonight, the Bever House did come down today, so that's the first step in the beginning, so.
It's awesome.
Anything else?
Well, and I would thank my fellow counselors for your faith in me, and I promise I'll do my best to earn it.
Okay, then we'll go on to the next item. Marks, updates by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, just four things. First off, on behalf of the administration, I would like to congratulate the mayor for being re-elected, and also for Councilmember Wimpy for being elected. On behalf of the entire administration, we look forward to working with you and to help you, all of you, continue to move the community forward. With regard to new council members, I just want to share with the public what Councilmember Wimpy's going to start over the next couple of months. Tomorrow, she's going to meet with me and go through her schedule, and she's probably going to spend fifty to sixty hours over the next couple of months going to every department within the city and meeting with the directors and senior staff, really for two things. Number one, to learn how we operate, and secondly, to learn their top two or three most important issues within their respective departments. And she'll probably take a half a dozen to a dozen tours to the wastewater treatment plants, water plants, police stations, fire stations. I know she's very excited about it, and I'm very excited too, because there's a lot that we need to get her up to speed on, so she will feel informed when she makes decisions, so I'm looking forward to getting that process started tomorrow. With regard to the budget, we're just about finished, and we're going to ask the council for a special session sometime towards the end of May to give council adequate time to look at the budget. A date was thrown out to you, that may not work, so you'll probably get another date or two that same week for the budget discussion. I just think it's important that we take some time and go through it, not only the operating budget, but the capital budget, as well as the budget for Bama. And then finally, on behalf of everyone, you know, this is the year of the parks, and I think next year will be as well, with all the bond approvals from the voters, so I can think nothing more appropriate than relocating the Veterans Memorial to our Veterans Park, and I want to thank you for that. As a fellow veteran, that means a lot to me, and I know it was going to mean a lot to a lot of folks to put those, those folks that have made that ultimate sacrifice into the park, and so I assure you that barring something unforeseen next spring, we will have that completed, so, thank you.
We do have an executive session, so I'd entertain a brief recess to go into Beta and Bama.
Still moved. Second.
Another motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Here. Udi?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Item three is consideration consent agenda, are there any items to be removed off the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. There's no public hearings, no general authority business, no executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Here. Udi?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. The, we have a consent agenda, there's one item on it, does it need to be removed?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. There's no general authority business, no executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Udi?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We do have an executive session, so I entertain a motion for a brief recess to clear the[1775.22]